All right, well, let's call the. Try to get the other one. Uh, Mr. Black.
What are the intentions of the United States of America? And to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, come on, who's calling?
Okay, so I'll just start. Commissioner Layton. I think that's Jennifer on, on camera. Jennifer.
On mute, your phone.
You're muted.
There we go, I'm here.
Uh, Commissioner Carbre. Uh, is absent. And then again, maybe not, I don't know, no, okay, Commissioner Carbre is absent. Commissioner Irons?
Here.
Commissioner Tenai.
Here.
Commissioner Connell?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Chair Barisi?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum.
Oh, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the November 21st?
Sorry, going down. Yes.
Okay, does anyone need any time to, to go through that? Okay, uh, I don't kind of motion to accept, uh, if there was any issues found or as it is, the minutes from November 21st? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 21st.
Said.
We have a motion and a second to approve minutes from November 21st meeting. Uh, let's vote.
To vote on that. Okay, so Commissioner, uh, Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenai?
Yeah.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Chair Barisi?
Yes.
And it's approved.
All right, move to all. And onto public hearings. I think it's just one. Okay, so the public hearing on amendment LND two four dash zero 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 one one is called a word. This is the urban zoning map amendment, LND two four dash eleven, say, urban applicants, uh, request to amend the zoning map reducing the area of BPA transmission line easement to be only within the BPA easement area to increase the portion by the sub district on the north and commercial on the south to allow development. This, the hearing saving will be conducted as follows. First, the staff will report, followed by additional correspondence that has been received. Questions of staff from the planning commission, public testimony in the following order, testimony in favor of the amendment, testimony opposed to the amendment, neutral testimony if there is any, and questions, uh, of staff, uh, by the planning commission if there is any, and discussion, uh, by the planning commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time date in the future, if the matter is reset to a time date in the certain in the future, this will be the only notice of that date received. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the principal planer. I will then call on people who want to speak. Any questions should be addressed for me because the hearing is being recorded, please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Please keep testimony concise and to the point, give the number of, uh... We'll try to limit testimony to five minutes per person if we have any. Please don't feel to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the planning commission and the other parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, prohibit an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals or Luba based on that issue. At this time, ask members of the planning commission to disclose any conflict of interest, please indicate the nature of the conflict, whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing.
So I am going to abstain from the hearing, um, and recuse myself, I'll sit over there, uh, because of conflict of interest. Do you?
Yeah, you don't have to recuse either.
Yeah, he does, yeah, he does.
He does.
I actually have to be in the audience all.
Yeah. He can come back up to the dais after the hearings concluded.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was the other way around, okay.
Nope, nope, if you recuse yourself, you can remove yourself.
Not be in there.
You can remove yourself from the day.
Alright, so, uh, we have one recusal. Uh, planning official plan will now present the staff report.
So, not everybody was here last month, so I, I will hit the high points, but, um, this is a continued hearing, we continued it last month because of the letter that's in the packet that we received from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Um, I was, I will admit, I was trying to skate under the, uh, the radar a little bit here in ODOT Cottis and call this out, and that's fine. So when you do a zone change, um, you are supposed to evaluate, um, certain aspects of, of potential impacts and tra- traffic and transportation impacts is one of those. So, um, their letter requested that we do a, a trip generation letter, not a full traffic impact analysis. We did that. Um, that is also attached to your packet tonight, um, and I will, I will give you the head highlights of that, and then I will, um... And then I'm going to refer you to some changes to the staff report. So, the highlights of the trip generation letter are, are really what you see, um, in the tables that they have there. Um, they, the, the letter itself, Anderson Perry's, uh, who is, who functions as the city's engineer, um, did this work on behalf of the city. Um, and they kind of, they kind of give some, some preliminary information on the front page of their letter that kind of talks about what they did and how they did it. And then on, on page two and three, there are a number of, of tables. Um, and the tables, each of the tables correspond with a parcel on the, on their exhibit map, um, map. Two, the second exhibit map, figure two, and, and they're attached to their letter. They, they made a general assumption and they, they, because this is commercial property, they just identified the potential use as a variety store. They just kind of picked a use, and it's kind of one of the higher impact uses. Um, and part of my response to, to this is, I, I appreciate how they did it because they really did identify the most impactful, one of the most impactful uses to evaluate. But in that, it probably really overstates the potential impact, um, that will happen. The likelihood of five variety stores being cited, um, on those, in those five places is not likely. I'm, I will see other uses. And like the, the portion of land that's adjacent to, um, Mr. Jones's property, uh, if it develops, you know, it's probably... There has been conversation about transfer, you know, selling that property to Mr. Jones, and if, if it were to develop, if that were to happen and if that were to develop, then it's going to be a potential expansion of his, of his magnificent home park. So that's a completely different kind of trip generation impact than a variety store would be. Um, again, the two parcels that are on the south side that are just right out here, um, you know, we're looking at those and, and there, there are some thoughts, but the one that would be adjacent to the senior center is probably going to become a part of the senior center property, and we're, we want to have some conversation about park amenities there. Again, that's going to be a very different impact than a variety store. Um, and the AM and PM peak would look really different for, um, a park facility than it would for a variety store. So, again, I appreciated that they picked a use, and we talked about it, it's not like they did this work in a vacuum. They kind of picked a use that would, would, in some respects, put the worst light on it from a, from a traffic impact perspective. Um, they have a conclusion in there, um, that identifies that the calculated average daily trips of thirty seven hundred is skewed because of the use in the urban suburban setting, um, and the true date, true ADT is likely to be lower. I don't, I don't disagree with that assumption either. Um, they do say that despite the uncertainty of the data, the proposed development may generate an ADT greater than a thousand. Therefore, in accordance with the findings of the analysis, the proposed project will require traffic impact analysis based on the criteria in the Oregon Highway Plan, so on and so forth. Um, what you'll see in the staff report is that I said, we're not going to do that traffic impact analysis because if and when any of those properties develop, we will require the development to do a traffic impact analysis if the development itself would trigger that requirement. So again, the, the property most likely to generate enough trips to require traffic impact analysis is the portion that's in, on the north side, on the northwest side of this area. That, and that's that part that's immediately adjacent to the property where we, we earlier this year approved the hotel, um, restaurant and RV resort. So, any development that would happen based on an expansion in property there, even any development that would happen on the balance of their property is going to require a traffic impact analysis. In fact, we're still waiting for the traffic impact analysis for their proposed development. So, we know that there could be, um, um, traffic impacts, and we know that we're going to need to do mitigation. But we also know that when that hotel project happens, they are going to make improvements to front, and they're going to make improvements, um, in collaboration with the city to check, develop the new road of southwest first, and then we will also build Oregon Trail. And when they do any further development on that property, they are going to be required to build what we're calling the interim road that connects southwest first to South Main. So we know that there's going to be traffic impact analysis that will be completed at time relative to those projects. So, what I, I, I added a little bit of additional language, um, bottom of page two, top of page, well, not really, top of page three, um, around the trip generation, the trip generation letter and the, and the trip generation. I think the important part of the, um, staff report is page four, uh, where under the decision that starts on the bottom of page three, uh, we, I've written four findings for the planning commission to adopt, as, as long as you're in agreement with them about this. Um, one that we're compliant, the first one is focuses on goal one, and that the fact that we've had two planning commission hearings, and we'll have at least one city council public hearing meets the, our standards for goal one, which is citizen involvement. Um, the process that we're using to go through this is compliant and, and supports goal two, and that's the second bullet. The third bullet, um, is around public facilities, including the transportation network, um, and that they are sufficient for development that would occur based on this proposed zone change. Um, and then I reference back to the requirements of the Main Street IAMP, um, to create that expanded road network, particularly in the southwest quadrant. And then bullet four says that based on the trip generation letter, again, the Anderson Perry document that's attached to this, applications for development on the property proposed for change in zoning will be required to complete a traffic impact analysis, and that requirement will identify the improvements needed. So, um, I think that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We have not heard further from ODOT. Uh, they were provided the staff report a week ago, at same timeframe you were, and there's been no correspondence that's come back from them. This is set for hearing in front of the city council on Tuesday, January seventh. Um, and so as long as you forward this tonight, that hearing is set and ready to, to go, um, for final approval. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions, a totally interesting about traffic impact analysis that I could put sense. On the trip generation report. Is there an allowance to use past trip generation reports, and I ask this, didn't we have one recently done, just this past summer?
So we were, we, there is a requirement when we approved the, the hotel project, that package.
Yeah.
We identified that they would need to, before we would issue the development permit, they would have to complete a traffic impact analysis for that project.
Right.
We received a traffic impact analysis for the hotel on the other side of the freeway.
Oh, okay, so it's just not covering the, the area?
Right, that one, that one covered the north.
Uh, south, southwest front street area.
No, the one that we did, the full traffic impact analysis we got was on the hotel on the north side, so that would be the northwest quadrant.
Right, behind Dodge.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um... And so, this, ODOT is not requiring a traffic impact study right now, okay, which I think is fair.
Yeah.
Until we, um... Uh, I did have any other questions? Um, I guess one more, as a person, is there any prohibiting us from moving forward with this?
Nope, nothing.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything. Uh, and, and there was no other correspondence, why don't we hear from ODOT, have you heard of any other correspondence at all?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, uh, is there anyone who wishes to testify in favor of the proposed amendments?
I had a question. Can I do that, as a testifying?
Yeah, so you need to state your name and address for the record.
David Jones, one oh five South Main Street, space.
You sign in the book.
Boardman, Oregon, nine seven eight one eight. Okay, um, that little portion right there, are we not going to do anything with that, or is it already zoned, or what's the deal?
That's owned by someone else. And I don't know what is zoned, but no, we're not.
So, so when that, when that person comes to rezone it, then at that point?
If they ever do anything on that property, then I, I don't have a zoning map right here for me, I'm not sure if it's zoned or not, I'd have to go look at it.
It's selling the BPA easement.
Yeah, we'll deal with it at the time.
Yeah, just agree, that's the only question I have.
Are we, are we talking about the, just due south of Parsley Sea?
That'd be just due...
Due, east, due west.
Due west of Parsley Sea.
Due west, you should be there, bordering Main Street.
Yeah, they front on Main Street.
Got it.
I don't remember even who owns it.
Bor was the last one that owned it, and he sold it.
Yeah, I, I'm not even sure who owns it at this point in time, so, yeah.
That's all, I am, I am for this, that's, that's my testimony part, okay.
Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to testify in favor of the proposed amendments? Hey, is there anyone who wishes to oppose the proposed amendments? Okay, and any neutral testimony? All right, hearing none. I assume the staff has nothing to add to?
There's nothing to rebut, so...
Perfect. Um, does, does member of the planning commission have any further questions for staff? All right, hearing none. There are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. Public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. And we just got split. Any, any thoughts on this? I think it makes sense to me. I think it's just kind of a matter of timing right now, but... The trip generation report makes sense, uh, I think I'm worried that it might change in the future depending, but...
Right.
We're in a kind of a state of unknown right now, so...
Right, again, any development that occurs will, um, will, and most likely trigger a traffic gener- uh, at least a traffic gener- a trip generation letter, not a full traffic impact analysis, yeah.
Any comments, um, from our Zoom, uh, planning commissioners, Reagan or Jennifer?
No, I'm good.
Okay, uh, now...
I'm fine. I found that I'm good.
We heard positive proof that you were good. Well, uh, with the, with the discussion, uh, I would then obtain a motion to adopt recommendation based on the findings provided by staff.
So, for, because this is a quasi judicial, or excuse me, because this is a legislative action, your, your action tonight would be to recommend approval to the city council.
Right, yeah. So it would be... A motion to, um, move this forward?
Yep.
Yeah, to propose?
No, I, I think, I, I think your best language is, um, a motion to, uh, forward this to the city council with a, a recommendation to do adopt.
Recommendation for adoption, yeah. Good verbiage. So moved. Okay, second. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second to recommend adoption of this to the city council to be presented in the January seventh meeting. Moving forward to city council for consideration.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, can we, can we recall both, just so we got?
We can, so Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenai?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Jones, Chair Barisi?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, uh, it is, it is approved.
Let's see. Okay, on to discussion items, one more public hearing, Mr. Ray.
So you do have in your packet, you absolutely can, thank you. You do have in your packet what, which, what was my, uh, planning department monthly update to the city council that was presented to them, uh, drafted on November twenty fifth, that presented to them at their December three city council meeting. Um, it's really just an update of, of the work that we've been doing, um... Think you met Orelli last month, if I remember right, so, um, from a staffing perspective, I, I will add to this report that's written, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on it. But, uh, from a staffing perspective, it feels like we're fully staffed, um, and doing well. Um, Orelli's learning curve is steep, but she's doing a great job at it. Um, we do have kind of a one point two code enforcement officer, um, we do have full-time, um, Albert Chief Corpus, who is our code enforcement officer, and then Norma Ayala, um, is providing some backup to him, and then comes in on Fridays. Um, some days just half day Friday, some days the whole day on Friday, um, based on her bus driving schedule. Um, but she's providing some additional support and helping us do some other coordination and organization within the code enforcement program. So, um, yeah, from a staffing perspective, it feels like we're fully up and running. Um, saw some of you at the Christmas party on the sixth of December, it was, uh, all had a good time. Um, those of you that weren't here, you have a bag that showed up here, looks like it's still at least two people. So, Reina and Jennifer, come by City Hall, um, either come see Amanda or come see Orelli, and we'll, we'll get you your, your Christmas present, I think you'll really enjoy it.
I could take Jennifer's shirt, she lives right next to them.
You willing to do that, Mike?
No.
Okay.
We have a cast.
Jennifer, are you okay having Mike bring you his Christmas, do you trust Mike to bring you?
As long as it doesn't smell like Mike.
Okay, that might do it, I don't know, and he might not bring it now.
I'm afraid we're not recording.
Right.
Um, so anyway, Reina, yeah, do please swing by, um, and pick up your gift at your convenience. Um, again, either touch base with Amanda or with Orelli, and one of them will get it to you. Um, I think that's kind of, uh, you know, Steph is, when we brought Steph on, the primary purpose, um, or the impetus, I should say, not the primary purpose, but I think the impetus for creating a principal planner position was the agreement that we entered into with Gillon County. And we, we've done the fir- the, it would have been the third quarter billing, but the first billing we did to them, she basically, Steph, did about eighty hours, um, each of the two months, two out of the three months, there wasn't a lot in July, and she didn't really track her hours in July. She did a better job of tracking her hours for August and September, and both of those came in at about eighty hours, which means she's probably giving Gillon County about half of her time. Um, I really didn't have a sense of what it would be, when we entered into the agreement with Gillon County, I really didn't have a sense of what their work level would be. I knew that like, all planning departments, it would be, it would have its peaks and valleys, so it would be times when it would be busy, and then times when it would be less busy. There was a backlog, and she's, um, been working through that, uh, and so, I, I'm encouraged, um, because the really cool thing about it is, now that I feel like she's kind of got her feet on the ground and knows what she's doing with Gillon County, and she's been kind of helping with training at rally, because she's better at that than I am, and I'm willing to recognize people's strengths and my weaknesses. It's been a long journey for me to get to that point, but I'm better at it now than I used to be. Um, I, I think it's a good fit, and I think we've got a really good team, and I'm excited about kind of where we're going with stuff. The, the letter that you have included in your packet really does try to summarize all the things we're doing with the project. So, um, we have got... In January, we will appoint our four public advisory committee meetings. So we've appointed the TSP Public Advisory Committee, we have appointed the, um, Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee meeting. Um, we just last, well, actually, this month, we appointed the EOA Advisory Committee for the Economic Opportunities Analysis. And in Jan- January, on January seventh, we will, um, appoint the advisory committee for the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code update, and thanks to that for agreeing to do that one. Um, it may be probably, I, I think the parks is going to be a lot of fun, um, for those of you who are following that process. Um... I just think that the involvement, the community involvement pieces that they're doing with the parks is going to be really, really encouraging and interesting, and I'm excited about that process. I'm excited about all of them, but they're, they're all a little bit different. Um, but we've had two PAC meetings, we had the TSP PAC meeting, uh, in early November, we had the Parks PAC meeting, um, in the middle part of November. Uh, no PAC meetings this month, but, um, I think we may have one, um, the EOA may have a PAC meeting next month. Um, if not next month, um, the, the first part of February, and then we're targeting, um, for the, the development code and comprehensive plan pack to have that meeting probably the first week of February. So those dates will become more clear over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be getting meeting invites out for that. Um, when you're at home and you're, you've got a few minutes and you're playing on your computer and you're just wandering around looking at websites, because we all have time to do that, go to the city of Boardman website. Across the top, there are those, um, one says, uh, government business or government departments, and then one of them says community. If you, it's the third one over, or the second one from, from the right. If you click on that, there's a place where it says strategic planning, and then it lists all of the projects that we're doing, TSP, Parks, EOA, all of them. If you click on any of those, it will, it will tell you who, who, who's been appointed to the PAC, and then we're tracking the meetings. So if you go there and you want to see what actually happened, or what has been posted for the TSP update, that first meeting is there. And if you want to see the information about the first Parks meeting, it's there. So the, the handouts that were available, and then the meet, we're recording those meetings and we're posting those recordings there. So, anything that is public facing with this, with these projects will be on that website. Um... The TSP, so, I also want to ask you to put two dates on your calendar, three dates for January. We will be having a January public hearing. Um, we do have a complete application, um, from Rich Devon about the lot that's right out here, it's being redeveloped, um, where the, it used to be the Shell. And I think at one point in time, there was a Taco Bell there, if I remember right?
Express, Taco Bell.
My first job here, was that the Taco Bell?
Yes.
Okay, well, that is being redeveloped, so it's been vacant for like four or five years now, they, they completely eliminated everything on that property. Um, they started a conversation with us a number of months ago, uh, they've gone through the process to replat it, it was two lots, and they've made it into one. Um, and now we've received the application for the development on that, so that will be public hearing January sixteenth.
Yep.
Um, we'll have...
See what they're putting on there, or is that not available, meaning just this part?
So, what I'll tell you is it's a convenience store, sixteen fueling, uh, fueling points, and a fast food restaurant. So, though, I think the, the staff report will be more, um, will be more definitive, um, but I'll give you that much today.
Perfect.
Okay, um, we're excited about the development, I mean, I think it's, it'll be really good for, for Boardman.
True, true.
Yeah, the other two dates that I want you to put on your calendar are Janu- that's January sixteenth. The other two dates are January fourteenth. January fourteenth will be an open house kind of event, we're going to be talking about South Main Street. Um, and the design of South Main Street, so South Main Street, from the freeway, just south of... From the freeway, just south of Front Street was rebuilt several years ago, a number of years ago. We're not looking to rebuild that section. It's from where that ends. And when you drive it, you can go, oh yeah, that's clearly where it ends. From that point south, I, I think to Wilson, I don't think we're going further than Wilson, but again. I kind of lose track of some of the details. So do come to that, to that meeting. You're welcome to come. Um, that is a project that's. I identify, it's approved, there are no further land use approvals that need to happen for that project. So it's on the capital improvement plan. You can go to, again, you can look at the website and find where we've got our capital improvement plan stuff. You can see what's been posted there. Um, and there.
Is that at?
I want to say it's the sixth.
Is it the city council now?
City Council is the seventh of January. The fourteenth is the open house on South Main Street.
That's here.
It's here. And then.
Is that gonna be broadcast? Or?
I don't know. It's a good question. I don't know.
Broadcast, because there's no way I can be there.
And then again, our meeting, a planning commission hearing is the sixteenth, and then put on your calendar, January twenty ninth. Uh, in the evening from six to eight, there will be two open houses. There will be an open house. Um, community event for the TSP. And for the Parks Master Plan. They will both be in this building. So if you come to one, you can come to both.
Twenty nine and six P M?
Yep.
Amanda doesn't have the fourteenth on the calendar yet, so.
Oh, I thought she did. I thought she did too. Refresh your page.
And then the one you said on the sixteenth, correct?
The sixteenth is our public hearing.
Okay.
Yep.
I will be not here. That whole week I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry. But I can, I, I can possibly zoom in.
That would be, that would be good.
The mayor does it from Hawaii, you can cheer him to it.
I'm gonna be on a cruise ship possibly, so we'll see. Actually, no, I think I'll be off the cruise ship by then, so.
That's what I have. Stephanie, would you have anything to add?
No, no, I don't. Have a good, happy safe holiday.
Orrelli, would you add anything to this staff?
You talk a lot.
You guys should all follow her and challenge her. Ask her some on the little questions.
Oh, during the day?
Yeah, I bet she'll, she'll be great.
So that's. Chair Barisi, that kind of.
Name of the group that I was in, that I'm in, that, the one that we had the other night, or a couple weeks ago.
Are you on the Parks Pack or the TSP Pack?
Yeah, we had those people from Portland or from somewhere here. There were a whole bunch of people that were, nobody knew. I mean, you did, you did, but obviously, but. We didn't.
Right.
I was just gonna say that one lady, the one lady that used to be from Portland, or used to be on there, whatever she did in Portland, that's one smart woman. I mean, she's, she's got. Her mind is right on top of stuff. It just blew me away how she did.
You know, I am, I have to say, I am really impressed with the consultant teams that, that we have engaged for all of this work. Um, for the TSP, it's Kittleson and Associates, and their sub on the land use is um MIG. Which used, the, the people that we're dealing with used to be um with the group called, with Angelo Planning Group. Um. Frank Angelo retired and shuttered his shop, and the staff and kind of their reputation moved to MIG. And then on the community engagement part for the TSP, they're using a group called ZAN, ZAN, ZAN and Associates, I think. I've never heard of them before, but apparently they've really been an emerging group doing community involvement in Oregon. Um, and the principal that I'm dealing with was, was with, is a gentleman by the name of Tom Holes. And I'm just, I'm really impressed. I mean, there's a little bit of overwork in some respects, but it, it's, it's good stuff. Um, on Parks Master Plan, we engaged a group called Shapiro Digway. And one of theirs, their, I think their only sub on this project is Eco Northwest. Um, and that's Bonnie, I can't, her last name is beyond me. Um. But Bonnie's, I mean, they're both great. Um, and then on the. EOA, we're working with Johnson Economics. I've worked with, with, um, and it's Brendan Buckley, who's the main person that we're dealing with. And their subs also make, again, the same people that used to be with Angelo Planning Group, and so. Um, I, I've, I've worked with some of these, those two groups, Johnson Economics and MIG. I've worked with for years. Um, Johnson Economics has done work. When we did the, the zoning for the Army Depot, Johnson Economics did the regional EOA for that project, and I, I worked with Brendan Buckley then. And then the group we just more recently hired was um Cascadia Partners for the update of the development code. And um the comprehensive plan. And that's the one that probably I was the most nervous about, because it's such a big project. Um, but so far, the meetings that we've had, I've just been really impressed with the staff on that one too. So, um. My biggest concern is actually my ability to keep all of those balls in the air as we work through this over the next. About eighteen months. And the parks and the EOA will get done first. Um, and then the TSP gets done ni- after that, and then the development code and comp plan is the last thing to get done. Hopefully somewhere in here, we're gonna get enough rulemaking done that we can start our housing needs analysis. Um, and of course, with the economic opportunities analysis, we have a potential urban growth boundary expansion that we're looking at. And the housing needs analysis is hopefully gonna allow us to do an urban growth of boundary expansion for residential purposes, so. Um, we're really trying to look forward to where Boardman will grow over the next, you know, yeah. A traditional planning horizon is twenty years, but I, I think we're really trying to look beyond twenty years. We can't go north. There's a river. We can't really grow south. There's a canal, which we could, we could, we could bridge the canal. Um. But you don't go much beyond the canal, and you've got a, 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 you've got a bombing range, so growing south is difficult. So that really means if we're gonna grow. In any meaningful way, we're growing east and west. And so, you know, Brandon and I have kind of said, well, that's kind of like bombing range road to tower road. Not that Boardman's gonna grow there in the next twenty years. But if you're not thinking that way now, and you're not thinking about infrastructure needs and those kinds of things. You're kind of shooting yourself in the foot. So.
Well, that big wind, or that big solar farm is gonna be out that way, right? On the west, on the west side.
So there is a, there is a solar project that's proposed um on the. On the port property. Actually, there was a secondary.
To the west of the airport, right?
Well, here's what's interesting, west of the airport. So it's three mock canyon farms. I've just been invited to a pre-application meeting. Um, for a potential zone change immediately west of the airport.
Hmm.
Um, thirteen hundred acres for uh data centers.
Really?
Yes. So there was a proposal for a solar farm there, and that seems.
Just a solar farm, it's like, it would, it would be one of the largest in the country.
That one is way south here. That, that one's down near Lexington.
Right, I, I, that's the one that's already built, right? Or the, there, there's a big.
Well, yes, there's one that's there that's built, but there's another one that's been, I don't know if it's finally, I think it has been approved. Sunstone is finally.
We got something in the mail about it. Or they, they said it, the wire or something. Yeah, it's just a.
Crazy amount.
Yeah, so we've got, there's, there are a multiple, there are multiple solar farms. Um, there's one on the port property. There's one on the port property um at the airport. And then there's at the, at two, if not three. The one that's been built is part of Great Ridge, and then there's the Sunstone project, and I want to say there's a third one, but I. I've kind of lost track of them all, because they changed their names as they go. What are we missing?
It's like Karen Heather hand raised.
Oh, Karen has her hand raised.
I haven't quite made this public comment yet.
Yeah. Karen, just a sec, we'll be in public comment, we'll get you there. So anyway, those are, those are all the things that are going on. So happy to answer your questions, and if at any point in time, something comes up and you want to.
Well, that's not all the things that are going on. I mean, we're also working on population stuff, and addressing ordinance and some other things, so.
Yeah, yeah, there will be a work session in front of the plan, in front of the city council in January. We're gonna talk about ad- addressing. We're gonna talk about shipping containers. We're gonna talk about um drainage swales and sidewalks. And business licenses. So, um, and those are all municipal code items. So there's a, there's just a lot of, there's a lot going on. So just buckle up, buttercup, because it's coming at you.
Twenty five, man.
Yeah. I think, yeah, yes.
Uh, any questions for staff before we move on? All right, let's go to the public comment.
Karen Pediger has her hand raised.
Karen Pedigrew.
Thank you. I just wanted to encourage you all to come to that. January fourteenth meeting about Main Street, because that's a project that. I don't care how hard we plan it, there will be a lot of critiquing on whether we did it right or wrong. Or whether we got the shrubs here or there. So now is the time the public needs to come out. When we have that meeting on the fourteenth. So you, our, all of our jobs are to try to get a packed house. That night, because. It's, it's gonna be a headache.
Six P M?
Well, yeah, six, it starts at six. It doesn't have a defined ending time, just, you know, but I anticipate staff will be here at seven thirty or eight. Yep.
Now it.
I'll, I'll find out if they're planning to zoom it. Um, it's not a public meeting. Um, and I don't know what kind of format they're gonna use, so I'll find out.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Thanks, Karen.
Karen.
Always appreciated.
And kind of as a tag on to that. Sort of related. Um, if anybody has any interest in our public transit system, they will be looking to appoint new members to the advisory committee. Uh, the county will be, so. Do you guys know anybody?
I mean. All right, uh, well, this is only. Public. Tonight, we'll assume that is it. Uh, any comments by the commission? Every person. I was gonna say, I would just like to share one, happy holidays and merry Christmas.
Yeah.
All right, uh, it's German time.
Works for me.
We'll adjourn at uh eighteen forty three.
Okay, forty two minutes, that's pretty good.